Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 at 7:30 PM. And we're going to start this meeting. I would like to call it to order. We're going to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're going to remain standing as words of inspiration are brought to us this evening by Pastor Ramsey Ficori from Grace Apostolic Church.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice alone.
Pastor Ficori?
Good evening, City Council. It's always an honor to be before you. Each time, it's always a privilege. Thank you. I'm going to read one passage of scripture, and it's found in Proverbs, Chapter 4, starting at the fifth verse. And the Bible says, "Get wisdom; get understanding; forget it not; neither decline from the words in my mouth. Forsake her not, and she shall preserve thee; love her, and she shall keep thee." Wisdom is the principal thing. Therefore, get wisdom, and with all thy getting, get understanding." Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we love you and we thank you, God, for your goodness and your mercy. God, I pray that you would bless this council meeting. May the words of our mouth, Lord, the meditations of our heart, be pleasing to you. Lord, in every aspect, God, we thank you for this great country. We thank you for this great city. We pray your blessing and your hand of favor over each proceeding and over everything that we do. Lord, your hand be in it all. Your name be praised. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much. Michelle, may we have a roll call? Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Here.
Mayor Milan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Moffett?
Present.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Here.
Thank you very much. We are here. Would someone like to make a motion to approve our agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda for January 21st, 2025, as presented.
Support.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the agenda, to add an item under new business. Let's call it Discussion of City Engineering Services.
Support. Roll call, Michelle? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. We have approved our agenda with an amendment to...
Actually, Madam Mayor, we haven't approved the agenda yet.
You're right, we have not. We added your item only. So, we added his item, which if... I'll finish the sentence and say, we're going to add that in to, we'll put it... pardon me, an "I"?
Nine "I."
Nine "I"? Nine "I," yes. Okay, and now, we need to go back to our original motion and approve our agenda. Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have approved our agenda. Next up, we have public comments. If anyone's here this evening and would like to speak to any item that is on the agenda, we would ask that you come to the podium. We'll allot you three minutes. We ask that you give your name and your address. Would anyone like to speak? Not seeing anyone come forward. We will close public comment and move on to item number seven, which is Proclamations and Presentations. First up, we have a presentation by the Claussen Historical Museum. Leah, welcome.
Hello. Leah Davis, Claussen Historical Museum. I am here tonight just to tell everyone kind of about our upcoming exhibit that we have. So, that will open on February 1st, as well as the museum. We always close for the month of January to do that update. And so, February 1st, which is a Saturday, we will be open during our normal hours of 2:00 to 5:00 PM. That exhibit is going to be on Kit Homes of Claussen. So, we are going to have that exhibit going for the whole year like we normally do. So, it'll be open to the public from February 1st through December. It's like our normal exhibits, free to the public, no registration, none of that. You just come in, enjoy it. So, Kit Homes, just a little information on that, also known as catalog homes, Sears homes. These were homes that were pre-cut, sent on a train, sent to your local train station. You'd pick them up and then have fun putting it together, or pay somebody to put it together. So, in Claussen, we have over 30 kit homes that are confirmed. There are more than that, but some of them, that we won't be including, are ones that people have asked us to... the homeowners have asked us to keep off of the list, just for their own privacy. And then, on top of that, we have some that are unconfirmed. Maybe they're a little too different from the advertisements, so we struggle a little bit to actually confirm exactly which ones they are. But there are technically more than 30. These come from four different companies. We have Aladdin, Wardway, Sears, and Lewis Liberty here in Claussen. The exhibit will feature photographs, advertisements, artifacts, history of kit homes, some interesting facts like how to recognize kit houses, things like that, for people to enjoy. At the same time, we're also going to debut our self-guided tour. So, these will be available starting that day for people to enjoy, and that includes 32 houses for people to drive around and enjoy. The kit home brochure will have a map in the insides, make it a little easier to try to figure out your whereabouts. And then, it will also include the original advertisement. So, when you sit there and you're looking at the house, you can kind of do a comparison, as well as with the make and model of the home and the build year. If you want more information than that on the house, we will have a QR code on the back that you can scan with the camera on your phone. And then, that way, you can actually see a larger print of the advertisement, along with additional information, like who was the original homeowner and things like that. We do ask that you don't drive while you are playing on your phone, looking at kit houses, please. So, there... in regards to these homeowners, we have sent out letters. We are going to send out another copy of this brochure to all of those homeowners as well, to kind of give them like an idea of what this is going to look like. And if anyone owns one of those homes and they decide, this is not for me, just let us know and we can remove your information. There will not be any current homeowner information out there. So, exhibit, brochures, website, nobody's who lives there currently will have any of their information on there. The only homeowner information will be like the very first people, 100 years ago, that built these houses. That's it. But yeah, so if anyone has one of those and you're deciding this is not for you, just give me a call and we will get you removed, for sure. And again, that opens on February 1st, and yeah, did you guys have any questions about any of that?
Do you have a copy of that brochure?
This is a really horribly printed copy. We're going to have them professionally printed, but if you want to be able to look at one...
I think I've made mention of it in public record, that one of them is mine.
Yeah.
Right, so... But yeah, obviously, yeah, I'm excited to see...
Yeah, and you'll get one in the mail.
Perfect.
So, yeah, any other questions on the exhibit, or self-guided tours, or anything? No? Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate you. Next up, we have a presentation by community, our Community and Economic Development Director. Mr. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So, since taking on the role of overseeing the Community and Economic Development Department, I've noticed and observed that it can be very difficult for members of the community to locate site plans, find out what new businesses are coming into town. So, last summer, we rolled out a development in Claussen webpage, where residents can go to view any open site plans, special land use applications, zoning ordinance amendments, last summer. And so, we have a centralized location where people can go. That's not the planning commission packet. I know searching through MuniCode and City Council planning commission packets is difficult. And so, putting these site plans reviews in one area where the community can go and find them, we felt was something that they deserved. And so, on top of that, over the last few weeks, we've been working on the 2024 Economic Development Report, which we will be releasing tomorrow, at some point during the day, on social media and the development in Claussen webpage. That report highlights new businesses and development activity going on in Claussen this past year, and also what to look forward to in 2025, whether it's the old Burger King site, what's going to be going in there, and then also recapping what was done in 2024, like the redevelopment of 502 South Main Street, the old CNC bump shop. And so, that report basically takes all of the business activity for the previous year, isolates it into one report, and also discusses what to expect in 2025 of what we already know at this point. And we're really excited to roll this out and, you know, be able to provide more information to the community on what's going on in Claussen. And with that, I do want to just want to thank all of our business owners and individuals investing in Claussen. I know that you make a big impact on this community. And I also want to thank Brandon Birch, Kristen Urbannick, and John Weingarten in our office for their time and support on getting these items together for the community.
Thank you.
So, I guess be on the lookout tomorrow on our social media pages to take a look at that report. Thank you.
Next up, we have item number eight, which is Consideration of Approving the Following Consent Agenda. Item 8A would be minutes of the regular city council meeting held on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. 8B would be minutes of the joint meeting, city council and school board, held on Monday, January 13th, 2025. Item C is the 2025 coin-operated amusement device distributor license renewals for the following businesses. One is pro-vending. Two, Union Music Company. Item D is 2025 coin-operated amusement device exhibitor license renewals for the following businesses. A, Fabric Care Cleaners and Coin Laundry. B, Claussen Airy, number 3926, which is Fraternal Order of Eagles. C is Old Detroit Burger Bar. D, Renshaw Lounge. E, Tavern on the Main. F, The Hideout. G, Whiskey Taco Foxtrot. Item E would be 2025 dance entertainment license renewals for the following businesses. A, Claussen Airy, 3926, Fraternal Order of Eagles. B, Claussen Steakhouse. C, The Hideout. D, Whiskey Taco Foxtrot. E, Downtown Charlie's. F, Old Detroit Burger. G, Tavern on Main. Along with item F, which is a list of bills in the amount of $985,300 and 60 cents. I move the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Michelle? Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. We have approved our consent agenda. We move on to item number nine, which is new business. Under new business, we have the consideration of the 2025 Class C liquor licenses for the listed businesses. Someone like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the 2025 Class C liquor licenses for the listed businesses be approved. Based on the reports and approval provided by the Chief of Police, Fire Marshal, Building Department, Water Department, and City Treasurer, and seeing there has been no recommendation for the revocation or denial of a renewal of their respective liquor licenses, and based on the following conditions. One, continued payment of all delinquent property taxes. Two, continued payment of all property taxes due on or before February 14th, 2025. And three, continued payment of all delinquent water bill taxes.
Thank you. Support. Mr. Raker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. According to the ordinance and policy for the renewal of the following Class C liquor license, the businesses have made application for their 2025 renewal, and have been inspected by the Fire Marshal slash Building Department, which includes a review of any expired permits, open code enforcement violation, and active certificates of occupancy and interior inspections, and by the Police Department, which state the businesses are compliant. See the attached report. The following businesses. Fraternal Order of Eagles, Claussen Steakhouse, Woodpile, The Hideout, Wyss De Silleri, Sozai, White Wolf, Mojave, Whiskey Taco Foxtrot, Old Burger Bar, Osaka Japanese Steakhouse, Renshaw Lounge, Tavern on the Main, Three Cats Cafe, Zeoli's Restaurant, Nori Chicken, Downtown Charlie's, Gus's Snug, Grand River Brewery, and the Claussen locale. The businesses highlighted in yellow were notified of this public hearing, which stated the delinquent taxes and/or water to the city of Claussen. Those three were Osaka Japanese Steakhouse, Tavern on the Main, and Grand River Brewery. It is my recommendation that all licenses be renewed, with the stipulation that each establishment continues to pay their delinquent taxes and delinquent water bills in a timely manner.
Thank you. We have... Is there anyone who's representing these businesses who would like to speak this evening? You may, if you'd like. Okay, not seeing anyone come forward. Does anyone have any questions regarding our list?
So, I have a question. The delinquent of $20,566.64 from one of the facilities, is that like for one quarter? Or how far back? That seems like a high number. Do we know how far back that goes?
Is worth the water? I think you're referring to Osaka.
Yeah, I didn't want to say it, but...
There are, yeah, unless it's public, so... That's okay. Last year, they actually went to go and shut their water off and they paid, so...
So, is this for a year?
Yes.
It's for a full year? And if... What happens if a resident doesn't pay for a full year?
Rolls the taxes. This will roll the taxes as well.
Any other questions?
We're pretty confident that after this, this is part of the reason why we do this, is to get them to pay their just debts.
Okay. Roll call, please, Michelle. Mayor Protem Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes. Thank you. We have approved the 2025 Class C liquor licenses for the aforementioned businesses. Moving on to item 9B, we have consideration of the traffic control orders 14 through 24 through 16 through 24.
I move the traffic control orders, TCO 14-24 through 16-24. Modifications to the operation of the HAWK signal located in the area of 14 Mile and Washington Avenue be, as provided herein, be approved.
Support.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Per Chief Bous's memo, the Transportation Improvement Association completed a HAWK pedestrian signal study at the intersection of West 14 Mile Road and Washington Avenue. Several recommendations were given. The recommendations were reviewed by the Traffic and Safety Board on December 5th, 2024, and the below list of recommendations were approved. In accordance with the duly adopted Uniform Traffic Code, the Traffic Engineer for the City of Claussen hereby issues the following traffic control orders. TCO 14-24, install pedestrian, a W-11-2 sign with quote-unquote "ahead," W-16-9P supplemental sign plaque to be positioned in advance of the crossing for the westbound direction of travel on 14 Mile Road. TCO 15-24, install stop here for pedestrians, an R-1-5 sign adjacent to the existing stop bars for both eastbound and westbound 14 Mile Road. TCO 16-24, remove the local law yield to pedestrians within crosswalk, R-1-6 sign posted in the center lane, Refuge Island, for both directions of travel on 14 Mile Road, and install "keep right" R-47 signs. Additionally, the TIA study recommended that the operation of the HAWK signal be modified, so that when push buttons to cross are used, the timing is such that the signal indications are activated for both directions of travel on West 14 Mile Road. This allows a pedestrian enough time to cross the entire road. The push buttons in the center Refuge Island should remain operational, so that a pedestrian slowed across can reactivate the HAWK signal. Chief Bous is here for any further questions.
I have a question. Of course, I do. But as you're walking up, my question is, can you explain the thinking behind removing the local law yield to pedestrians?
Indecent.
Thank you. Within the crosswalk and replacing it with the "keep right" sign? They seem like different messages, and I just... Can you explain that?
Yeah, so, the engineer who completed the study advised that it wasn't in compliance with what is their current standards. So, that's why we voted for it at the Traffic and Safety Board meeting. We didn't ask for an explanation, but he did say there could be two options. You could use that R-47 sign, or we could replace the signs that weren't in compliance with additional delineator ballards, so...
What's a delineate?
I don't know.
Oh.
Because we chose the other option, we didn't research what those were, so I would have to look into that further.
It just seems like, and I guess he knows what he's saying, but the "keep right" seems like a completely different message than, hey, you have to stop for people in the crosswalk. I don't... That doesn't make sense to me.
The "keep right" is to avoid the pedestrian island, I believe.
Yeah, correct. But also, don't hit the people, right?
You're removing the yield because it's making it a stop now, I believe, is the correct interpretation.
Well, it was always a stop when the light was on, right? You're always supposed to stop.
But you had the conviction... You had the yield to pedestrians per local ordinance, per local law.
So, yielding and stopping also are technically two different things, if you look at...
So, is that why? Because it wasn't just a yield, it was you're supposed to stop and not hit them, and not just let them... Like, I mean, seriously, I just... It jumped out at me like, those are different messages.
I don't want to make assumptions and, you know, speak for him when he's not here. I obviously took his exact recommendation and just typed it verbatim. So, other than, he gave the two options, and at the Traffic and Safety Board meeting, we chose the "keep right" R-4-7 sign. We didn't ask any questions about the delineator ballards, and I'm not familiar with them, so if we want to hold off on that one, I can definitely get more information from him and get member report back to you.
Could we, like... Because it seems like it's important that we move forward with this. Could you also still, though, get more information so that we could modify it? Like, I don't want to, like, vote no on this, because it's important. Like, two people have been hit and everything, right? So, I don't want to vote no on this, but I also want the best choice. So, could we approve this and then also have you get information about why that's that way, maybe what's a...
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend approving the "keep right" R-47 sign, but we can approve the other two.
Oh, so we could, like, make a motion to delete that, maybe? Is that what you're saying?
I believe so.
Oh. So...
I mean, you could... It's my understanding that you can make a motion to support them each individually, or not support them each individually. It doesn't have to be all three together. They're individual traffic control orders.
Why are you saying not to support that one, when you brought it before us?
I support it. I'm saying it's your option to not support it.
So, but if we were... If I were to make a motion to remove that for future, and then you could come back, like, we could do everything but keep... So, this is my question, sorry. If we remove that, does that local law yield pedestrian within crossing signs stay in place until it comes back with something being... Because that piece says we're removing that, so that would stay there?
If that's what you vote... If you voted not to approve that traffic control order, it would remain as-is, that sign. My recommendation would be to approve it. Obviously, that's why I put it forward, but I'm just saying that is an option. If you guys would like to vote on that, I'm happy to look into it further and bring information to the next Traffic and Safety Board meeting, which would be the first Thursday in February, for them to re-review that. I can do that. I will say, though, just for clarity, there has been one pedestrian struck in that crosswalk, not two.
Okay.
But that specifically is not a factor, you know, in the accident. That was recent.
Mr. Raker?
Yeah, the "keep right," I believe, is because there are a couple incidents where they're actually running into the median that was reported. So, I would ask that we continue to move forward on this, but we can revisit your concerns and bring this back, once it's vetted through the Traffic and Safety Board again, to make it as safe as possible.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up as well, the fact that that section is curbed, and there was one report that said that somebody had hit that curb and that they ended up over on the grass on the right side, over by the collision shop.
So, what if I... I'm going to make the motion that TCO 16-24 be modified to keep both signs, so we not remove, but we also install, and that more information be presented at a later date to clarify why we would remove that sign?
I don't think it's in compliance, though. I wouldn't remove and...
We can't have both of them?
No. We can leave it as-is, if we want to revisit it, I guess, in the future, but otherwise, I would recommend whatever the engineer recommends. He's the professional who did the study.
Would you be able to bring information back at the next council meeting, which is in two weeks?
What's the date on that?
Fourth. I can produce... We'll put the request in for information for clarification. I'll get it to you as soon as I can, and a Friday feedback, and then what I can do is get it on an agenda as soon as possible, once it's been vetted through the Traffic and Safety Committee.
When the signal is activated, what... If I remember right, it's flashing red?
Yes, and so, if you recall, this study is actually at your request, when we reviewed the study for the school. So, the original reason that this study was done actually was to look at crossing for students, but obviously, they study all different times of the day and different people crossing at the intersection, so...
But I guess my point is that, is it flashing, or is it solid?
It flashes.
Okay.
I don't think that's correct. I think when you press it, it turns solid red with both lights, and then, after a certain amount of time, it goes to flashes red, which means you can proceed if clear.
I go over there all the time. I see people crossing without ever activating it, and I always feel like, please activate it, so I know what's going on.
Well, I don't know if anybody else looked at that study.
Right.
Oh, I did, yeah. So, one of the students...
Shows about half the people who do cross there don't press the button. One of the students that crossed was my student, right? And the fact that he looked both ways is great, right? But the fact that, again, it's like, we paid money, pushed the dang button.
Some people don't even utilize the crosswalk, and are actually crossing...
To Mr. Binkowski and Mr. Shepherd's point, that is something that I plan to bring up to the superintendent's attention tomorrow, when Chief and I meet with him for another matter as well, is like, the education of your students, when you're traversing to and from school, utilizing these crosswalks properly.
Another question. I know there is a pedestrian struck there recently. Did we ever come to the bottom of whether or not they did activate the signal?
We do have video surveillance footage that shows whether it was activated or not, but the investigation's still open.
Okay. Is there... And I certainly... And I very much appreciate Mr. Raker talking to the superintendent about the students. Is there any way to maybe do some similar communications with the residents of the Claussen Tower there? Because I personally almost hit someone who was crossing, dressed in all black, not at the crosswalk, to go to the liquor store, or the party store, gas station across the street there. And it's... And I saw from your thing, it seems about half the people who cross the street there are crossing from the senior apartment, not at the crosswalk. I mean, is it... I mean, could there also be a recommendation to look at, or at least look into? And I know it'd be expensive, moving this closer to the senior tower?
I think that's something we could definitely visit, the option of. I don't know what the cost to the city would be for that.
The only place would be in Gerard, right? And there's not another street across from there.
Yeah, I believe that location was selected because of where Washington intersects 14 Mile, right there. I think we're all aware of the mass amount of pedestrians right there on 14 Mile, and they just need to take a few steps to their east to cross safely. I think we can talk to...
Yeah, we can definitely do a program at the...
At least an educational session.
It's for all those reasons that a sign that says "yield to pedestrians" seems so important to me. I just... I really struggle with not having that stay.
Now, are there signs on the right-hand side of the right-of-way? Or is it just the island and above the street?
I'm sorry, can you...
So, is there a... I'm trying to picture it again. Is there a pedestrian caution sign for pedestrian traffic on the right-of-way?
In the middle of the right-of-way?
No, that, well, off on either side, right, of the, on, on the south side, on South Wash, or South Fourteen, and the north side, going either way.
So there are pedestrian signs with a diagonal downward arrow, there are supplemental sign plaques for both directions of travel at the crossing location.
But there wasn't any indication for additional signage on the south and north side of the street?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But the distinction, Chief, is the fact that we're changing it to stop here for pedestrians instead of leaving the sign that says yield to.
There's nothing that says stop here.
Yes, it says install stop here for pedestrians R five, which is fourteen, which is TC fifteen twenty-four.
We're still on the TCO sixteen, right?
Yeah.
Well, I was, because that one is to remove for yield purposes, where fifteen is installing. So to address your concern, we're, we're changing it from yielding to stopping. So that's why it's being removed.
So they're install, I mean, if fourteen also is installing additional pedestrian signs.
Okay, there it is, I see, okay.
And those will be posted in advance of the crossing.
But, is that on the island, or farther forward on the median? Or not on the median, but on the right-of-way?
It's in, I'm sorry, what's that? It's in advance of the crossing.
It's on the street.
So it would, yeah, it would be on the street side, would be my assumption.
I, I just, you know, what I'm envisioning is, when you have, there's a light on Sammaset for the school that's constantly flashing, right? And that's just one of those that, you know, has a light on top of it for, for students crossing.
Which one?
On Sammaset, as you're heading towards Kenwood.
Okay.
All right. So, I mean, I, there's not additional lighting to warn that there's crossing there, other than what we're showing here, right?
I mean, would you, is there something specific that you guys would, like, evaluate it further?
Well, I guess my point is that, you know, if we have a crossing, school crossing there at Sammaset, is there something that potentially, or do we have to be within a certain feet of the school to say there's a school crossing, and have it be flashing at that point in time during school hours?
So you want that to also say school crossing, is what you're suggesting?
Yeah. Because we have one over at, I, I believe there's one at Walper and Charlevoy for, for that, as we, you know, its kids used to go towards Kenwood.
Yeah.
And it seems to be a little bit farther than where the high school is, so.
We don't see any harm in adding that.
We can take that back to the Traffic Safety Committee?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to...
Have to sign off on that.
I don't think that they have to sign off on that, because it's not, it's just a warning sign, it's not controlling the traffic.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Oh, I just, I'm, I'm just, you know, throwing anything else out there that, you know, is a, is a, what, calming, traffic calming, besides reducing the speed limit, right?
We are aware that this, the lines for major streets, those crossings, those will be addressed in the spring.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
So, just for clarification, then, we'll get back, we'll add the school crossings on both sides of Fourteen Mile Road then, correct? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. In addition to these TCOs, which will not take any more TCOs from us.
That shouldn't, no.
Okay, all right.
We just, I don't know if we have them in stock, we'll have to check with trouble. They probably have to be ordered, I don't imagine we have those in stock.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have something else, Glenn?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Thank you, we've just approved traffic control orders fourteen dash twenty-four through sixteen twenty-four, modifications to the operation of the Hawk signal located in the area, Fourteen Mile in Washington. Moving on to item nine C, we have consideration of the reappointment of Gregory Cussera Jr. to the Planning Commission with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
Madam Mayor, I move the reappointment of Greg Cussera Jr. to the Planning Commission with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, be approved.
Support. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Cussera is here, if anyone has any questions for him, yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm curious if Mr. Cussera has passed the MSU Citizen Planner course?
The last update that I had is that he has not completed the course at this time.
Okay, well, maybe, well, I'll, I'll just say it, this seems like a small ask for a person on the Planning Commission to complete the educational course, and I'd rather not appoint someone back to the Planning Commission unless they have completed this course.
Okay, thank you for your opinion. Anybody else have any comments or concerns?
I have another question. As Mr. Cussera submitted his ethics information statement.
I'd have to take a look at inventory of that with the clerk's office.
Anything else?
Well, maybe we can delay this until we find out if Mr. Cussera has submitted the paperwork that is required by law.
I think we will go ahead and call the vote, and you may vote however you choose. Roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cussera, for your willingness to serve on our Planning Commission, and we appreciate you very much. Moving on, we have, we'll go to item ninety, which is consideration of the reappointment of Sam Fitzler to the Planning Commission with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven.
Madam Mayor, I move the reappointment of Sam Fitzler to the Planning Commission with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, be approved.
Thank you.
Support.
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if Mr. Fitzler has completed the MSU Citizen Planner course?
Mr. Fitzler has completed the course.
I also have another question, we have a series of four renewals here, and there are five people on the Planning Commission whose terms have expired. The fifth one is Mr. Aaron Nishai. Is there any reason why he wasn't reappointed, or he isn't being reappointed by you?
I believe that the charter states that the mayor brings appointments, and the council confirms or does not confirm.
But I'm wondering if you could share with us some of your rationale for not reappointing Mr. Nishai?
I have not failed to reappoint Mr. Nishai, Mr. Nishai is not part of today's list of reappointments.
But you have not reappointed him, are you not asked to have him reappointed today? Can I ask why?
You may ask, and I will say, because he was not included with today's applications. That is my answer.
But his application was received, yes? Do you have an answer, or no?
I don't think I have to answer to you, so I will let it stop with that.
Has Mr. Nishai passed the Citizen Planner course?
He has.
Okay, so we've got a guy who's passed the Citizen Planner course, and you refuse to reappoint him.
I have not refused, Mr. Binkowski, you are looking to cause an issue that does not exist, you will not help your case or anyone else's case if you continue with this conversation. Would, I would like a roll call, please, Michelle?
Excuse me, I still, I have not, I have not finished my questions, please.
You're out of line, you are finished with your question, because you're badgering and trying to cause an issue that does not occur. Roll call, please, Michelle.
Can I ask the city attorney to please share with us the Roberts Rules of Orders on this matter? Am I allowed to keep discussing?
Technically, if I may, Mr. Binkowski, on this particular issue, that application is not before the board, so I would imagine that the answer to that is no, simply on that application alone.
Fair enough.
With respect to the rest of it, the answer is yes.
Mr. Raker?
Until someone would suggest calling the question, which then you would vote on ending discussion, and then call the vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, we've just reappointed Sam Fitzler to the Planning Commission, Sam Fitzler, thank you for your continued service. Item nine E is consideration of the reappointment of Josh Solomon to the Planning Commission with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
Madam Mayor, I move the reappointment of Josh Solomon to the Planning Commission with a term to expire December tw- December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, has Mr. Solomon passed the MSU Citizen Planner course?
Mr. Solomon has not yet completed it, but has made significant progress, he just hasn't had that final certificate issued yet.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Thank you, Josh Solomon, we have just approved your reappointment to the Planning Commission, and we do appreciate your willingness to serve in that capacity. Moving on to item nine F, we have consideration of the reappointment of Evan Carpenter to the Planning Commission with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-seven.
Madam Mayor, I move the reappointment of Evan Carpenter to the Planning Commission with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, be approved.
Support.
Madam Mayor, has Evan Carpenter completed the MSU Citizen Planner course?
He has not, but that is because he has not had the, an account transferred from someone else who withdrew from the Planning Commission to his name, but he's shared once he has access to it, he's going to get going on it immediately.
When was Mr. Carpenter first appointed to the Planning Commission?
I don't know the date exactly.
Yeah, roughly a year ago, right? We did it.
So it's, it's been a while, though, hasn't it?
That's correct, we've had some issues with the Michigan State extension.
But, but Mr. Cussera has, has access, yes?
Correct.
What are the issues? Is it just the licensing, or?
The, the way that the license works is, it was tied to a previous account holder, that account holder, so when, when you register, you pay for that individual.
Okay.
That individual did not end up signing in to access it, and so we just need to transfer it over to Mr. Carpenter, but we've had issues with MSU extension getting that completed. I've been following up with them, and we're hoping to get that taken care of soon.
Nick, what's the cost for that?
I don't know the exact number, I, I would be guessing, I want to say it's anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars, but please don't quote me on that number.
No, that's fine, I didn't think it was twenty dollars, so that's good, that gives a little bit of information. Any other questions? Roll call, please, Michelle?
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Thank you for your service, Evan Carpenter, we welcome you back to the Planning Commission for a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven. Next up, we have consideration of the reappointment of Evan Carpenter to the zoning board of appeal, with a term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-seven. If everyone recalls, we have a representative from planning who serves on the zoning as well, and Mr. Carpenter's been kind enough to be willing to give up his time to do both, so.
Madam Mayor, I move the reappointment of Evan Carpenter to the Zoning Board of Appeal with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, be approved.
Support.
No questions? Not even playing field, got it. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
Yes.
Thank you again, Evan Carpenter, for doing double duty for us, and your willingness to serve on the zoning board of appeals. We appreciate your service. Next up, we have, I know, agenda item nine H was consideration of Clausen proposed charter amendments one and two.
Madam Mayor, I move the Clausen proposed charter amendments one and two, as presented, be approved.
Support.
Mr. Raker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council previously approved establishing a special election in May to facilitate proposed charter amendments pertaining to maintain four city council members as opposed to expanding to six, which is currently part of the city charter. After multiple engagements by our city attorney with the offices of the Attorney General and Governor, the refined language of those amendments is before you for your consideration.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just very briefly, as you're aware, based on our previous conversations, the Attorney General and the Governor of the state of Michigan obviously have authority to review our proposed charter amendment pursuant to, pursuant to the laws of the state of Michigan. And I've engaged with attorneys from both offices for, ever since you passed this particular proposed amendment. And we've gone back and forth, and the goal has been to offer as much clarity as possible to these, to proposed charter amendments. It was, it was and remains not a simple proposition, and that is because, among others, the way the current charter language reads. As you're aware, the, going from four council members to six council members takes effect, is already in the charter, however, it takes effect over a period of time, starting with the November election, and then, and the next election as well, both regular city elections. As a result, having as clear a language as possible, which was everybody's goal, both when this body considered the proposed language, as well as with the Attorney General and Governor's office, is not necessarily simple. What you have before you does not change in any substantive way what you passed. On the contrary, it simply organizes these statements in such fashion to where the Attorney General and the Governor's Office, you know, believe that they would satisfy them and the legal criteria for them to sign off on approving the proposed language, so that it may go in front of the electorate. As you notice, one addition that has been made that wasn't there before was one that was assumed at the earlier, at when you passed the ordinance, but now it's stated outright, there's a tie bar with respect to both amendments, which basically says, if you pass one, one will only take that, will have value if two is also passed, and vice versa, right? We wouldn't consider one versus the other. I'm happy to answer any questions, what I would ask, though, since you have already voted on this, on this substantively, the same proposed charter amendments to go before the voters, I'm asking you to keep the same vote as before, and even if you changed your mind somehow and voted against it before, I would ask that you, and then now you want to vote for it, I would ask that you keep your original vote, I think it would make the most sense.
So, I just have a question that a resident asked me to clarify, and I wasn't sure, so I'm asking it here.
Yes, ma'am.
So their question was, if they're opposed to changing the charter, then they would vote no on this, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that was their question, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I gave the right answer.
I was ready for more.
Okay.
For what it's worth. But it's substantively the same, that's the answer to your question, ma'am, but it's substantively the same as what you passed before, with a tie bar being the only addition, otherwise similar.
They were asking, like, when it's vote, on the ballot, that, not us up here, but when it's on the ballot, if they wanted to not change the charter, then they would vote no on these, right? It was, which seemed clear to me, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Gotcha.
Any other questions? Mr. Binkowski?
Just like to say, reiterate my opposition to this, the voters voted on this new charter with seven people just fourteen months ago, and I think it's best to honor the voters' wishes and not spend thousands of dollars of taxpayer money for another election, just because some people don't like what the voters did. There is absolutely no reason why this council cannot function with seven people. Heck, our Planning Commission functions with nine. The, the idea that somehow five is a magic number for this council is preposterous.
Any other comments? Roll call, please, Michelle?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
No.
Mayor Malone?
Yes.
Mayor Potamoffett?
No.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have item number I, we have our council member wanted to add an item on engineering.
That's correct, discussion on engineering services, I believe, was.
Thank you.
Make a motion to discuss engineering services in the city.
Support.
I've talked to some people at other communities, and they regularly, in their course of business, reevaluate their engineering providers. Some have one engineer on call, other... Some have one engineer on call, others have two or even more. Some put every engineering job out for bid. I think it would behoove us and our taxpayers to invite in some engineering architectural firms to find out exactly what their services are, what their costs are, who their personnel are, what their expertise is, and to bring that before the council so we can decide whether our sole source engineering service that we're using now is really the best for us. Because frankly, I've heard they're expensive, and you can see that from the billings. So I think it's probably, how long has it been since, how long have the AEW been our engineers?
Do you have any speculation on that? It's been a number of years.
So why not take this time, before we get too deep into this giant series of engineering projects, to look at some cost comparisons and to look at some services and to see exactly what other firms can do for us?
Is DPW currently pleased with the services they've gotten from AEW?
Yes, very much so.
Okay. Have they suggested any changes?
They have not. I brought this concern up to, and I'll bring it up tomorrow, we have an engineering meeting again, that there is that concern out there. What I can do is have AEW come before you and provide greater insight, if you'd like. I think there's probably a lot of institutional knowledge that you cannot put a price tag on with inviting, you know, like, to go out to the lowest bidder. I think that might be, I mean, that was brought up once before, and it cost us money, to the tune of forty-nine thousand dollars. I understand the concern. I think we can address that concern by having AEW come here and have a more robust discussion.
I agree with you that the institutional knowledge is, it's priceless as far as a community like ours with younger staff and not as inexperienced staff, and also not having a licensed regular engineer on staff as a community. And I'm not sure what you know about engineering rates. Mr. Binkowski, but I work for an engineering firm, and I've seen their rates. Their rates are not out of line by any stretch of imagination from what I see on a day-to-day basis.
Well, as an engineer who has done, has worked for an engineering firm in the past, I'm very familiar with engineering rates. And frankly, I was married to a engineer who works still in the engineering firm, and I'm very, very familiar with the way that these firms operate. And frankly, I do think we're overpaying, and I don't see any reason to dismiss out of hand bringing in several firms. You can always pick AEW, but why not look at all your options before just saying, oh, we like AEW, they're great?
I don't think anyone said that yet, and I also.
Well, I mean, it was implied.
I'm concerned, why you're concerned with the professional services that AEW provides, but you've yet to mention any of the other professional services that we render on a day-to-day basis in this community. You've not shown any concern about those for some reason.
I'll get to them eventually.
Oh, I'm sure you will. Great. But if, Mr. Raker, would you like to entertain some sort of a plan to do?
I'll ask AEW to get them on the schedule to have a discussion with council as to, you know, the pros and cons, and I don't think they'll have an issue with coming here and exploring this conversation.
Could that?
But not the other three, not other firms, just AEW.
Could the presentation include some benchmarking information about market rates to similar firms or similar, like, can we get some benchmarking to see? Because, and I don't know, I work at a chemical company now, I don't know anything about engineering, but I know that it's easy to say, oh, they're really high because we see really big bills, but I mean, could we get some information about? Yeah.
We can do that.
Along with that, do we have a list of other cities' engineering firms? Let's see.
A list of others? I don't.
Other cities' engineering firms? I know that AEW works in Warren, whether Detroit uses them, Birmingham.
Yeah, they have a repertoire that's lengthy.
Frankly, I'm sorry, the discussion seems to be going this way towards a, oh, yeah, we'll have AEW come in, and they'll smooth everything out, so.
Maybe from the conversation.
I will make a motion. Sir, sir, it is my turn to talk.
Maybe from the conversation.
I move to direct the city manager to solicit presentations from at least four engineering firms having personnel in the Metro Detroit area as to their services, expertise, and costs by the end of April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. All right, no one likes to save money. Let's go.
Well, the last time you did this, you spent money. Forty-nine thousand dollars.
If I may, as an engineer who has experience working in the civil engineering industry, I can tell you that AEW's been with us for years. Nobody knows Claussen's infrastructure system better than they do.
That's a shame.
Well, I've read the reports.
It's a shame that our DPW does not know our engineering and our infrastructure better than AEW.
I didn't say that.
Just did.
No, no one knows it better in the engineering fields than AEW. So with that experience, they developed the reports. With that reports in conjunction with our DPW, they have developed the infrastructure plan. If we solicit other bids, it will require, it's a time-consuming process. Any firm we bring in will need time to study our infrastructure and come up with their own kind of plan, their own set of priorities. Then, of course, it could cost an entire construction season. Now, I know many of our citizens want the infrastructure addressed quickly. I've even heard some people say, "Infrastructure now." So if we want to proceed promptly.
Someone campaigned on that.
Yeah. If we want to proceed promptly, we should say with AEW, I see no reason to shop around for the lowest bidder at this point in time.
I think the benchmarking information will give us an idea of, I think it'll give us an idea of, are we paying too much? And I think that we're all prudent enough that if we look at the benchmarking information and see that they're way out of, then we'll be good fiduciaries. But I don't think it's a bad idea to bring them forward and have them talk to us so we have a level of confidence about, you know, what they're doing and know that we're watching them and that we're going to, you know, take extra look at the bids they put in, the money they put in, and make sure that we're being as responsible as possible. But, you know, we don't want to throw the baby out with the back of water either, so it's slow roll into investigating this issue. I think it's, I think it's smart that you brought it up. I get the, I get the idea we should be looking at all of these things, and so I think it's a good idea that we be responsible and look at it, but let's crawl, walk, run in investigating it. And if we see a red flag and something's really amiss, then we can do something, but we can't assume that there's something, so let's start the conversation, and I appreciate you starting the conversation.
So AEW has been integral, have they been integral in our entire process and understanding what we have in front of us for the bond?
Absolutely. They were, you and Councilman Anderson were at our work sessions where we had discussed at length with them.
So essentially, they've done the drawings, they know the product, so that anybody else comes in here, they're going to have to, RFP, they're going to have to spend all that time in order to understand what AEW already knows.
Yeah, correct, sir.
And most likely won't take the information that AEW in its entirety, they would want to recreate some of that on their own.
Absolutely, they would. They want to start from the top down.
So there's a cost, an opportunity there as well. So the fact that the longer that we delay this, if there is potential any delay, that's going to cost us even more than what we expected to do in the first place. So I mean, look, I want to be fiduciably responsible. I do, I really do.
These leading questions are great, I'll tell you. These leading questions, oh, we have, we have to use AEW for, I mean, I see what you're doing here, Glenn, but it's ridiculous.
Being pragmatic is what it's doing. I mean, the fact is, like, if you have, if you go out to build a brand-new engine, like, you're going to get somebody that says, like, oh, I have never done that before, but let me know what it is, give me the RFP, and I'll try and figure it out. They're not going to be experts in that. Maybe they are, that's fine, but we already have somebody in-house who knows this backwards and forwards, and there is an opportunity that they have that will inherently have some initial savings than somebody that has to do it from scratch and take, gee, I don't know, a year, year and a half from?
Where are you getting this year, year and a half nonsense? You're making it up out of whole cloth.
You guarantee that anybody else that comes in here is not going to take that time.
Why not bring them in and have them present? Have them tell us how long it's going to take them to get up to speed.
I believe I said.
But you're just saying no. Oh, they would, they would take a year, year and a half. Why not have the other companies come in and talk to us about it?
They're not going to have the experience already because AEW has already done this. We already have.
There are dozens of AE firms in Metro Detroit who do this work all over Metro Detroit. It is not just AEW.
So you can get somebody from, I don't know, Wyoming to come in here and say that, yeah, this is what the cost is going to be without ever having understood what our bond was, what the back history was, what their homework was that AEW has already done.
My motion specifically said having personnel in Metro Detroit. I'm not talking about a firm from Wyoming. I'm talking about firms with engineers here. So why not bring them in?
If we were going to shop for the lowest engineering service price, it should have been done some time ago. If we're going to tear up a business relationship as long-standing, one needs to have time.
Well, you're right, it should have been done long ago, maybe when you first got elected.
Indeed, but I wouldn't know because based on my knowledge of AEW, I'm confident that they're pretty solid on it.
Madam Mayor, can we close the discussion, please?
Yes, we can close discussion on this. Let's move to item number ten. Do we have any unfinished business? No unfinished business? Do we have any public comments for items not on the agenda? Hi. I just ask you to give your name and your address, please.
My name is Mark Sackett. I am a, address, I do not live in Claussen, I live in Birmingham, actually. I am the general manager of a summer college baseball team called The Leprechauns. We are, I am part, the summer college baseball team is where college kids play in the summertime. I am partnered with a young man that I coached in two thousand and six. His name is DJ Lemahue. He plays for the New York Yankees right now, nearing the end of his career. The Leprechauns are part of the Northwoods League, which has had over three hundred and sixty players make their major league debut. So it's quite a prestigious league, a summer college league. It is one of the most prestigious summer college leagues in the country. We play seventy-two games in seventy-five days, and we're very, very similar to minor league baseball. We have thirty-six home games, thirty-six away games. We actually play right now over at Memorial Park, right at Thirteen Mile and Woodward. Currently, we're exploring some new venues to play in for the future, not really this summer, not maybe next summer, but down the road here. We've made a significant investment in Memorial Park to make it our home, but we are not required to play there. This summer, we will be playing a couple of our games at the historic Hamtramck Park in Hamtramck. That's the site of the old Negro League team. I'm here basically to introduce you to our organization and make you aware of the type of program we operate. Could Claussen City Park be one of our, be our new home? I don't know. But in the coming weeks, we'll be sharing complimentary passes for you to attend one of our games this summer. We start Memorial Day, we finish the second week of August. We just want you to show you what we're all about and make sure you understand that if it's something that the council and the city of Claussen would consider, then we can continue talking further about maybe finding us a new home. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing that information, and thanks for thinking about Claussen. Any other public comments? We will close public comments and move to our city clerk's report. Michelle?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Newshie.
Madam Mayor, I will skip as well, given that we have a few closed session items tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Raker, city manager report.
Yes, ma'am. Sewer cleaning inspection is underway, and they will work whenever the weather allows, starting northwest. The weather's been pretty cold, so they have not been working. You can see there's probably about ten percent of the city that's been either addressed or is currently being addressed right now. If you want to find out where progress is being made, you can go to the city website, DPW. On the left-hand side, the fifth item down, it's, it says, pardon me, Department of Public Works and Cleaning and Televising of Sewers. And that page also has additional information that's helpful considering that effort. I'll have a proposed budget timeline for council's consideration to you before the second meeting in February. Pending any questions, that's my report.
Thank you. City council comments. Mr. Binkowski?
I'm absolutely dismayed by this council's refusal to even look at other engineering firms. We're embarking on a multi-year, at least five, six years of sewer, road, and water main improvements, and we refuse to even just listen to other engineering firms. And the fact that folks here are saying, well, we can't do it because we got to go this year, what about next year? And the year after? And the year after that? Are we stuck with AEW forever? Why not bring in firms now? I'm not saying that we have to jettison AEW for this calendar year, but why not bring in other firms to hear their proposals? And that's all I've got to say.
Ms. Moffett?
I appreciate Mr. Binkowski bringing up the issue. I think that it is good that we're going to get some presentations and start the conversation because I think it's a valuable conversation. But I had a little boss who used to really emphasize the crawl, walk, run, and I think that that's where we should take this and keep the conversation going to make sure that we're in the best place, but, so I appreciate the conversation. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
No comment.
I like how there was a pause there. Councilmember Shepherd?
I just want to say thank you again regarding the discussion and the progress we've been making on the crosswalk at Thirteen Mile. I think that's something that's been needed for a long time, and I appreciate where we are right now, and we're close to, I think, an even more safe pedestrian crosswalk there. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'd just like to say I really appreciate those members of council who understand that this is a teamwork situation and are not out to try and, I gotcha, to anyone, and I really, truly appreciate any person who puts their name in and is willing to serve here. And I'm always somewhat absolutely dismayed when members of this body want to poke at the people who are willing to serve. I don't understand it, but do appreciate you, appreciate the willingness of everyone here who does want to work as a team. And then, we're now going to move on to item number sixteen, which is consideration of going into closed session for purposes of receiving attorney-client privileged communication regarding matter of Jaris Cannabis versus City of Claussen, City of Claussen versus Lindsey Bannas, and Renshaw Apartments pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two sixty-eight, section eight H of the Open Meetings Act. We will be going into another room, and we will return to this meeting room and close up the meeting once we have adjourned from the other room.
So moved. Support.
Roll call, Michelle.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we are back from our closed session, back here in open session. Mr. Newschaefer?
Madam Mayor, I request that two separate motions be articulated for purposes of our open session.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize the city attorney to enter into a consent judgment as proposed by plaintiffs.
Of the Jars versus City of Claussen.
Jars versus City of Claussen.
The part.
Any comments, questions? Roll call please, Michelle.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Portman-Moffitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our city attorney will move forward on the Jars...
Versus City of Claussen.
For the City of Claussen, yes, sorry, thank you. Okay, and then we have one more.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city attorney to initiate notice of potential legal proceedings to recoup costs and fees expended by the City of Claussen regarding Claussen...
Versus Bannas.
Versus Bannas.
Support.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Roll call please, Michelle.
Mayor Milan?
Yes.
Mayor Portman-Moffitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Thank you. Our city attorney will move forward on the Lindsey Bannas case.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
All right.
Madam Mayor, I move adjourn.
Support. Roll call please, Michelle, when you catch up.
Mayor Portman-Moffitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Binkowski?
Yes.
Mayor Milan?
Yes. Thank you everyone, have a wonderful evening.